I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the second Tuesday meeting for the Rhinebeck Village Board of Trustees. The mayor is currently out of town. I'm the deputy mayor, so I'll be running the meeting.
Today is October 28th.
Today is October 28th. It is 3:34. We begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Really? Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the acceptance of a bid for replacing the septic system at the police department. So just a quick review, as you know, that septic system has failed. It was being pumped out every week to the tune of $300 and something dollars. We received one bid at the last minute. It was from O'Farrell Earthworks Limited. The total bid was for $56,945.18. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this bid with the funds coming from our New York class accounts.
From fund balance.
Fund balance, New York class accounts, correct.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any additional discussion?
Do we want to...
A generalized disappointment that this has happened?
Yeah. Do we, I mean, we feel like this is a fair price or should we extend it and try to get more bids?
I think we do feel like it's a fair price. I mean, I know that, I know that people reached out to various companies in the area and just had them bid, and this is the only one that returned. So there we go. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, second item is going to be Vanessa with the E E C E G, nice servant grant update.
Yes, so this is the grant having to do with the energy study for this building and potentially installing upgraded HVAC equipment for this building. We got the good news that from the Department of Energy that what we thought was the September 2026 deadline, they said is actually July of 2027. So that gives us more time, which is always great when it comes to complicated projects. So I'm really pleased about that. We're not going to be under such a crunch to get the work done. We still have to finish the energy study by the end of this year, but that's, that's fine. They're rolling, they got all, they already did their, their measurements and the lower door test. So this gives us a little bit more time to really make an informed decision about what we want to do and, and then create a path forward. And I haven't yet, I haven't really looked into this yet, but as we get to see how much things are going to cost, maybe it's an opportunity to start looking for additional grant money so we can do more.
It is an expensive proposition.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's it.
All right. Our third agenda item...
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda to have, talk to Brian now so he doesn't have to sit through the entire meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
None. Right. Brian, come forward.
So I'd like to get TV hooked back up in the firehouse as a emergency services. We need updated news and weather here for when we're here. So the streaming is all we have now. We used to have off, or Spectrum. Spectrum was here and then we had it when they had the internet here. We were getting it for free. Once we lost the internet, they started charging us for it and it was disconnected. So I'm proposing that we go with YouTube TV. There are three choices that I looked at. YouTube, DirecTV, and Hulu. Hulu is the most expensive. DirecTV is within $2 of YouTube TV, but you have to sign a two-year contract. YouTube TV is non-contract. It's just set so you can stay, you can cancel at any time. So if for some reason it didn't work out for us, we could cancel and be done with it. It is, comes in at a, I believe it was like $84 a month.
And do you have that money in your line item for utilities?
Yep, we can put it under utilities.
Okay. Because $84 a month totals more than $1,000 a year, thank you for getting three bids, as it were, or at least three numbers.
Right, three numbers. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll have to work out, I think it needs a monthly credit card?
Yeah, we can just put it on a credit card on file. I know it could go under...
I can do it to the clerk.
Under the clerk store, or you could put it underneath the credit card for, for the chief and just comes out and gets paid through the utilities, however you want to do it.
Okay. We'll figure that one out. All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept or to authorize the use of YouTube TV for our volunteers who are either gathering news or are waiting on call.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nope, motion carries.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did. Thank you.
Okay, so now back on the schedule here. Our third agenda item is to acknowledge the resignation of John Kraft, who was our working highway foreman. He is resigning as of 10/17 this month. There's no motion that we need to make, just the fact that we're acknowledging, John did a nice job when he was here, but he has additional opportunities, so it's time to move on. Related to that, we'd like to open the working, open the working highway supervisor position to have Martina put out, advertise for the position. She would start Thursday, because she's not here tomorrow, take it through November 7th at 4 o'clock. We think that the, that the starting salary should be $28 an hour, however, that may be moved commensurate with experience.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do you guys have any additional questions about this?
Till November...
November 7th at 4:00 PM.
Which is a Friday.
And that gives us enough time to interview and then have somebody set up pretty quickly. So that's it.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number five. Kyle and I had the opportunity to interview some highway laborers, some laborers for the position. We interviewed Robert Graham, who we thought would be a real good, real good fit for the department. He's currently working part-time for Red Hook Parks and Rec in a similar kind of position. So I'd like to make a motion to hire Robert Graham, starting salary $25 an hour. His starting date would be November 20th.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Stealing him from Red Hook?
No, 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 he's a part, he's a part-timer. He's, he's... They're doing, they're doing, they're, I think they're fall, they're fall winter cleanup, so he's just working for them.
I'm sorry, what was the starting?
Starting, starting $25 an hour, starting date 11/20.
Which is a Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Now that was based upon, he, when we spoke to him, he's going to a bachelor party.
Well...
That is, that is, okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our sixth item, this is going to be over to Eleanor for Open Parks Committee members.
All right, so if you remember, we staggered the years, the terms, so that not everybody would leave at once. So the two terms up this time are Paul Higgins and May Rossi. Paul would like to continue on, but May is stepping down. So we have one clear opening. We have Paul for the other one. He's been, he, he kind of, his baby is, is next door, is Crystal Lake.
Right.
So he, so I like him on the park because he always, he'll tell me when they're diving and, you know.
He knows everything that's coming on there.
Eyes on it, I've got eyes on it.
And then I have a resignation from Davesh, which is here. So do I give it to you, Ms. Secretary?
Sure. I'll make sure that Martina gets it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. She's running for the town board. That was a two-year term, so it would be a winter vacancy. And I would like to keep it open. Maybe we could get a couple more people on the, on the committee to just expand what we can do.
Yep.
So we would like Martina to advertise to the villages?
She's going to have to advertise definitely for May and Deb's position. So, so can we say up to four or...
We could just, so there's seven people on it now. Well, six, if we ignore the resignations, oh, there's six, there's six on it now?
Yeah, yeah.
And how many others left?
And it can go up to nine, right?
Okay.
So we could accept up to five new people if we wanted.
Right.
But, so I don't know how we usually phrase that.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
We'll be, we're going to be... Yeah, I think those are called volunteers.
I don't think we need to put a number on it. Can we just say, we open the, we're asking for volunteers to step forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a sense for how long you'd want to have, have, when you want to...
I'm just wondering if three weeks would be enough, only because once you get into November, it's, I realize now, starting January 1, with these terms, which seemed a logical thing to do, it's not exactly a practical thing to do.
Right, between like Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that stuff.
It's not going to be a lot of time, so, so maybe try for three weeks, is that...
So three weeks from today is, one, two, three, is November 18th. We could hold it open until Friday the 21st, or even after Thanksgiving. But Friday the 21st, at least we'll let you know how many people are interested before our next board meeting. And so then we could figure out if we need to reopen it.
Sure. Now, do we think, can you tell me, do you think we're going to have a board meeting on the 25th? We can decide that.
I mean, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
It's a Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
It's not the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And it's not at night.
Well, I would, I, that's...
Are you going to be gone?
I'll be gone, yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, that doesn't mean you can't have a board meeting. I can always be there.
But so, but worse comes, well, okay. I mean, you could hold it up until the 5th and then...
5th of December.
We can appoint on the 9th.
That's true.
With that, Ralph, your, your preference?
Hold it open until December 5th, which is a Friday?
I would almost say a little earlier, only because remember, we had trouble scheduling in, once December started, we had trouble scheduling.
Okay. Maybe until 11/26, which is the Wednesday. And as people come in, you can start interviewing them immediately.
Exactly.
All right.
That sounds, that sounds good.
All right, 11/26?
What's, what's your, you said you can be away for a while?
Well, I'm going to my son's for Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, so the motion is for an Open Parks Committee...
To advertise.
Until 11/26?
For volunteers, yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, continuing on, this is the LH Prism.
Yes.
Not prison, but prism.
Prisms, yes.
Do you want to explain what happened next?
Yes, what happened was that I gave you the simple steps to join Prisms. And that was things like, they would like register, go to a couple meetings, you know, breathe deeply, write a report. And then when I registered, all of a sudden I get back a contract, which I did not feel comfortable signing this contract, you know? And so I just wanted to either have Gary sign it, or I have no problem signing it, but I just wanted to make sure everybody got a chance to look at it. And if you're okay with me, I'll just go ahead and do it.
Sure. Technically, trustee, yeah, technically, as trustees, we can't sign...
That's fine.
On behalf of the village.
That's, I have no problem.
Sure. Technical, only Gary or the deputy mayor. I have a signature authority, Gary's signature authority, but that's it. Justies don't, in general.
Not a problem. Well, do you want to sign it then?
If we approve it, I'll sign it when we're, when we're done here, sure.
Well, we assigned, we did approve joining.
Oh, so this is really just to like authorize a joining?
This was only because all of a sudden, there's this contract, which they'd said nothing about.
Right.
Signing a contract.
Can you, can you remind broad strokes of the contract, what's...
I just re-d emailed it to people just in case, too. It might be quicker for you to glance through it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do you have a guess, want to take a minute here?
Holy schmoly.
I know. That's what took, a lot of it is just, you know, definitions of terms.
This prism is actually like...
It's like a real thing.
It's governmental identity. It's not just a simple organization.
Or do...
I mean, if people are not comfortable, we do this at the next board meeting, I don't, I don't think there's any particular...
This is fine.
I mean, you probably know contract law better than any of us. It's probably, this is just governmental...
This is more like they're using a contract to sort of, like, enforce a job, a job description, basically. I think this is fine.
Yes.
Any partner may terminate in writing, their participation in this with at least 30 days notice, like, that's where I get concerned. So that's fine.
Okay. So...
It's not like there's any fine if we don't participate.
No.
There's, there's, there's no money required, there's, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that I will be authorized to sign on behalf of the village. However, there is a primary contact information, and I think that should be you making, making Eleanor that primary contact.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All right, call for a vote. Anybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have a peddler's permit from Boy Scout Troop 228.
For the reeds!
Correct.
Past contest, we moved on to reeds.
Right. So this is something that's done annually. It's, you know, a, an event that we like. The term is November 29th from 10 to 2. So I'd like, make a, make a motion to approve this pedaling permit.
Second.
Any additional questions? All in favor, say aye.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. When is it? Oh, it's November 20th. Sorry.
Okay. Ready? Come on, trigger.
Yep. This is harder than it looks.
I agree with you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just, can I just interrupt real quick? Rick and I, as you guys know, have been working on policies and stuff. Something that became clear as we were wrestling with event peddlers, sidewalk sales, special permits, blah, 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 is that they've all been drafted, the oldest one is from the early 80s and the most recent one is from 2021 or something. And...
Are you saying ours or the ones in Lexco?
Uh, no, no, ours, ours, our laws. Like the sidewalk sale law, the vet law, the peddler's permit law. And there's some, like, this. It's like, it's a little unclear how we're not, we're going to need to update those laws. We're going to, we're going to need to spend some time to figure out where the missing's are and where the redundancies are and where the overlaps.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what Lydia's saying is basically that there are some things that people thought of which, why would you do this? And other things like, why didn't you think of this?
Right.
And also there are overlaps between what's a peddler's permit, what's an event permit.
What's the sidewalk sale, like...
It just, so it's a big...
I think we need to control, because all of a sudden, there are vintage pop-ups, like, up and down the streets on the weekends.
Well, yeah, that's an interesting question. I don't know, I mean, we do have a garage sale law.
Oh, yeah, that was the other part of it. There's also a garage sale law, right?
So I think one of the things, yeah.
Yeah, so that, we're going to need to sort of examine, I think about five of our laws about this and, you know...
And just make it about like commerce on the street.
Right.
Or bring it into reasonable, you know...
Yeah, and like, we've kind of created a little bit of framework of how to think about it, but like, I just wanted to like bookmark this for you all, that this is something that like, if someone feels like banging their head against a wall, we're going to invite them to bang their head against this particular wall.
I mean, even if we end up with a low bar, but to have some bar so that not anybody can go to anything, anything.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and, and actually, and Eleanor made a good point, which is outside of the occasional garage sale, I don't know, you probably can't do regular commercial reg, you can't have regular, I would think, retail activities outside of the retail district.
Right.
So, you know, so we will, we should, we should be taking a look at it, probably revising our permit procedure as well.
Yeah.
But we're just about...
We were, we were working on the policy and then suddenly we realized that the laws were sort of in conflict with each other and we were like, oh, God.
Right. So, and, yeah. And what we'd like to do ultimately is move a lot of stuff that's in law to policy, so it's just much easier to, to, to review and revise as necessary.
Yeah.
But first, we're getting close to being able to present our policies.
Yeah. And I think at some point, we, we need to talk about, we've talked about having like a, just like a working group of like, this is what we've done, this is our suggestion on how we sort of tackle this as a, as a group. Because the last thing that we want to do is just like dump 80 draft policies on you and say, what do you think? Right? I mean, that's like not helpful. We've been spending, oh my God, I think eight months on this at this point, and so like, there's a lot of, like, we now know a lot and we want to sort of make sure that we provide this to you in like bite-sized pieces, so it's not overwhelming and so you can actually be thoughtful about each one of these topics. And they are the board of trustees' policies. They're not like, you know, they're the village's policies, but they're our, they're our policies. And so like, we need to be comfortable and clear on what they all mean. So...
And we, and again, as with, as with the, these permits, the permits and these other laws, we found out there's policies we didn't even know we're supposed to have, that we've now, you know, now we've now drafted. We've tried to clean up stuff, make stuff, there were again deadlines in one place and another place. So we've tried to clean all that stuff up, hopefully, and soon we'll be able to present it to everybody.
Yeah. So, okay.
Thank you guys for being here.
Digression?
Yeah, we thought we'd finished all the first drafts right before this meeting and then we realized that we needed a penny catch policy and I was like, shh! So we have one more to do and then, yeah.
All right. Digression?
Digression closed.
Digression ceased?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Our ninth agenda item is a refund to Tiny House Ceramics for their peddler's permit. And again, we as a village award, we have to authorize the refund of $100, excuse me, $500. And this is because she no longer wants to hold this pedal, a permit, and she's going to conduct her sales in places that do not involve our control. So I'd like to make, I'd like to have a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
You make the motion, okay?
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last items on the agenda.
Can I, can I add a couple things before we end?
Sure, let me do this and then we'll pick it up, okay? We do have some vacation buyouts. Employee number 10 for 80 hours and employee number 28, excuse, yes, 28 for 32 hours. The village clerk has reviewed the applications and approved that they have the time, and this is a perfect way to take it. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the employee, buyout request from employee 10 and 28.
It needs to be separate motion.
Okay, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the buyout request from employee number 10 for 80 hours.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, thank you. For employee number 28 for 32 hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our regular scheduled agenda. Vanessa, you wanted to talk.
Yeah. So first, a sad announcement, which is that the main organizer of our local repair cafe has passed away unexpectedly.
Oh, no.
It's very, very, very sad news.
I'm so sorry.
But I wanted to publicly announce it because they are canceling the November 8th repair cafe at Brookfield. So my condolences to T. Moon's family.
Good.
Sad news. I lived here in the village, so he will be missed. And then this other item I want to bring to the table, just to have like a little bit of a discussion, so you guys are aware and if you could chew on it a little bit. As you know, we have our ongoing relationship with Maris College, studying flooding along the Landsman Hill. And they're proposing that we put in some scientific measuring experiment in Crystal Lake Park to measure the levels of the lake.
Right.
And to maybe even measure like the flow of the water with the dam, all on the surface of this larger ongoing project, right? And so we had discussed a while ago, actually putting some signage there in the park to explain to the public, like, this is an opportunity to explain, like, what's this weird contraption sitting in our lake? But also, you know, what is this, why are we doing this ongoing research? And kind of the nature of our collaboration with Maris, which we're really proud of. It's been a great project. But it brings to mind this question of signage in our parks, educational signage that the public would interact with. And I was like, ooh, this is kind of a can of worms. Do we have, you know, brand guidelines for the aesthetics of those signs? Do we have any thoughts about like when and where and how we want to have educational signage in the village? And I know there is some precedent for educational signage as being to do with a historic district. And so I just wanted to bring that to the table because, you know, as someone who's, who's done a bunch of stuff with, you know, communications and, and branding, like, you, if you don't have some guidelines, stuff can look really wacky really quick, even with the best intentions.
So what I'd say is, so Lydia and I, we were looking at policies around this. Basically, it authorizes the village award to have to approve any signage that goes in, but it does not talk about any particular branding, you know, actualities, yeah. And that's probably a good idea, you know, what is the, what is the, what is the brand of the, of the village of Rhinebeck?
Yeah.
I think guidelines would be important, because otherwise it just depends on, it just gets too arbitrary.
Right. And you want to have a uniform look.
Right. So these are things like font choices, color palette, you know, maybe even font size. Do we want to have constraints over, you know, the dimensions of signage?
That we do.
So at the moment, I'm just looking at the draft that we're going to, we're going to, the draft on installations on village property. Memorials, living memorials which are trees, historical markers, public art, and then, and then, and functional installations, and this sounds like a functional installation. And then, of course, there's like donor recognition and naming rights, and then like donor recognition signage, which are like, usually pretty tiny. So we have some guidelines around donor recognition signage.
Okay.
But it's, the rest of it, it's sort of like, "Functional installations shall be appropriate for their intended location and use, compatible with surrounding facilities, the village standards used to protect and safe and accessible for all use, designed for durability and reasonable maintenance requirements." You know, "The village may establish standards for specific types of functional installations, such as bench designs, playground equipment specifications, to ensure consistency and quality across village properties." And so this is where Rick and I keep running into the role of like policy versus then like, you know, procedures and guidelines and stuff that come after the fact. But on something like this, I would imagine that we would actually want to approve guidelines. So if you want to take some time and like draft up some guidelines around that?
Okay.
Well, I was going to say, you just drafted, you just drafted Vanessa to become a graphic designer.
Well, it's not really graphic design, it's more like, you know, I mean, like those Department of Education signs. Well, I mean, it is to graphic, but like those Department of Education signs.
They call it identity design.
Well, and it's interesting, because the comp plan got all excited at one point about like, what is the brand of the village?
Right, this is the same question.
Yeah, and like, and, you know, folks really wanted to talk about that, and we had to shut that conversation down, because we were like, the comp plan committee is not the branding, you know, like, we're not going to go into a branding conversation. But.
Are there people on the implementation committee that would, that have any expertise in this? Like Steve Diller?
He's not on the implementation committee, but, you know, we could create like.
He's tree commissioner.
We could create like an ad hoc branding committee that like comes together.
Catherine?
Yeah, that comes together to like design some of this stuff for us, sure. Like, a whole like branding process for the village, as you know, is like a different.
Much more complicated, yeah.
Because it's like, are we a walkable, biteable village? Are we a technologically advanced village? Are we, what's our tagline village?
At least what we're striving for, at least in village, in village, documents and signage, that we would have some commonality.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a bigger, I mean, some people would, some places would hire a big fancy graphic design firm, which we're not going to do.
I can talk to some people who, you know, are professional, that could give, you know, a professional opinion on, ooh, boy, you really need to hire someone to come up with something. Or, hey, yeah, a couple volunteers who know what they're doing could provide you with what you need for this.
Would there be any high school kids? I know where I used to teach them, there were some kids that were really creative.
It's a nice idea to like pull them into it, I mean, yeah.
You can't guarantee you will use it, but you never know.
That's a nice idea.
Pretty creative people.
So here would be my ask, to Vanessa maybe.
Yeah.
If you can say, we are looking for an ad hoc branding committee. Working group, and the things they should address are.
Yeah.
So that would be, you said font, font colors, stuff like that. So that maybe next time around, we can go to some people and say, here are the things we're looking for.
Yep.
And the beauty of an ad hoc working group is we don't have to approve it.
Oh, okay, great.
Although we'd have to approve, we want to approve there. And there probably, there would also probably have to be some public comment about what the designs that are, stuff like that.
We'd probably be involved, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, whatever comes forth, we're going to have to approve, and we'll have to approve the public.
But I thought also, the Parks Committee might be interested if you guys are talking about other signage, I don't know.
We already, we already had a signage policy, but policies were not very popular. I can forward it, it was mostly about what size signs.
Oh, yeah, we incorporated that.
Oh, okay, well, thanks.
So I can also send this draft, you know.
I ran around, I ran around the, what is it, Poet's Walk, and measured all the signs there.
Oh, my God, Eleanor, that's amazing.
Right, right. So this is mostly, yeah, this is more, this is more our, our, our brand identity that we're looking for here.
Yeah, like signs, I mean, we're going to have to redo the, you know, when you drive into the village, it says like, there's no parking from these hours to these hours, like, you know, having that, having those signs redone in a way that like actually.
Welcome to.
Welcome to.
Something.
Right.
Without those gateway signs.
Without those gateway signs, yeah. And then there's like a series of signs right after the gateway signs that are all like, now they're from the village of Rhinebeck, don't do this and do that, you know.
Some of that, some of itself, maybe, those signs may be governed the.
Yeah, I mean, like the state road signs.
Whatever it's called, the empty.
Right, and then like the bicycle thing, that's like governed by the bicycle people.
Right, well, what we're, what we're, excuse me, what we're looking for though is a font and a style that would be uniform and acceptable for the Village of Rhinebeck in a, in a, in a park setting, and maybe the.
Yeah, I mean, there is a sign for the mini park, probably that the Landsman made in uniform or something. But I don't think there's even any sign for, for the Crystal Lake Legion Park. There's no sign.
Nope. I don't think so.
And like, I could imagine it would be interesting to educate the public about how there used to be a mill there, and like, our whole village is organized around being like a mill place, so.
Wait till we get it fixed up a little bit.
Yeah, and we will have.
But I mean, like, I think these conversations are kind of fun to start.
I'd love to do something about the memorial there and get that.
Yeah.